Good morning. I want to welcome everyone to the Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting on April the 19th. This morning, our invocation was from Commissioner Antonio Williams and the Pledge of Allegiance is from Commissioner Freeman Hardeston.
Thank you. Please bow your heads. Lord Father, we thank you for gathering us all here once again, Lord God. There's a lot of us that didn't make it this morning. So we ask, Lord God, that you cover each and every one that's here in the audience, the county commissioners, the staff as well, Lord God. And also, give people in their hearts to care for our less fortunate people in this community, Lord God. We have homeless people that are really in need. And ask that you just have put a caring heart on them where they can assist on some level. And also the violence, Lord God. Ask, Lord God, that you fight against this violence that has plagued not just our city, but all of North Carolina. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please stand. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Well, we have a nice crowd this morning. Welcome here. We do need a motion to approve the minutes of April the 5th.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All right. Any adjustments of the agenda?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. No sir, no adjustments at this time.
No adjustments? Great. We'll move right into special presentations.
We need to approve the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do need a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay? Now, special presentation.
All right. Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to introduce Ms. Sherri Archibald, who is United Way Executive Director. And she has a proclamation for National Volunteer Appreciation Week. And she has some special friends with her as well. But thanks, Sherri.
Thank you. And I want to thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to be able to present these wonderful volunteers in front of you. Every year, the North Carolina Governor's Office and Volunteer NC opens the opportunity for each county to nominate volunteers in their community to be recognized. The United Way of Wayne County was invited just a few years ago to facilitate this effort. And while it has been challenging through COVID, we are beginning to see ways that we can now come out and acknowledge them in the public arena. And I do want to share before even moving forward, I'm excited about moving forward into this year after year to find bigger ways to acknowledge these volunteers, not just the ones that we'll be presenting in the future, but those that you're going to see today who will be alumni in this program. So I want to just take a moment, again, thank you for allowing us to come before you today. I will read the proclamation, and then I would like to recognize 12 of our nominees that were named. And I'll share with you a little bit more about some of the things that we're doing because this is National Volunteer Appreciation Week. Whereas a sense of caring and a desire to share have motivated many men and women to volunteer their time and services to the needs of others in Wayne County community. And whereas volunteers help the sick, the needy, the disabled, and enrich our lives through the arts, recreation, cultural activities. And whereas Wayne County has had many dedicated volunteers who give their time and expertise on boards and committees that benefit our citizens. And whereas volunteer action is a powerful force for the solution of problems and volunteers are increasingly recognized as an important partner with governmental agencies. Whereas volunteers have become an essential part of any prosperous community, and volunteer services help expand programs and stretch our tax dollars. Whereas Governor Roy Cooper and Volunteer NC recognizes volunteers across the state for their contribution to each 100 counties. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of April the 17th through the 22nd as National Volunteer Appreciation Week in Wayne County, and urges all citizens to recognize and thank our volunteers across this country and within Wayne County as we acknowledge the importance of our volunteers and take the time to officially thank them for all that they do. Adopted, this the 19th day of April 2022, and signed by Chairman Joe Daughtry, Wayne County Board of Commissioners. Thank you all so much for this opportunity, and I do want to acknowledge each one. Now, many of our volunteers, as you can see, are here in the audience today. We invited them so that they could be part of a recognized recognition in front of you because it is our county, your county, that they are doing so much for. Last night, we were before the city council and had the opportunity to recognize them as well by name. Today, we brought them before you so that we could recognize them in person. We have a United Way of Wayne County certificate to recognize them for their services. This Thursday, we will be on base to recognize those that are members of Seymour Johnson Air Force Base who are recognized. And then on Saturday, we'll be at the North Carolina Pickle Festival as we'll recognize those who were selected to be part of the North Carolina Governors' Recipient Award. So lots of ways to recognize. I hope that you all will join me and our community in recognizing so much that our volunteers do in our community. So I'm going to list those names, and if you will, if you don't mind, we will ask them to come forward. I had a great suggestion of we'll have a photo with all of you together. We do have some great volunteers here, but also a lot of their nominators are here too. So again, I will just remind you that this will be an annual process. You'll see about this again next year. And so I hope that those that are watching today will make nominations in future years and will continue to recognize those volunteers in our community. So we'll go through the names here. Ann Kalar Parks, who is also in our United Way office, will provide them with a certificate. Brandy Matthews. Bronwyn Atzenhofer Henson. Donna Countryman. Ethan Phillips. Evangelina Servetson. Isaac Karina. Johnny May Flowers. Kenneth Coley. Kenneth's birthday is also today, so another celebration for him.
Happy birthday!
Mark Colbrook. Tanika Bessant. And the Martin family. Sure, thank you, I would love to.
And if it's okay, can we get the commissioners to stand since Kenneth is covering me up?
Can you just a little bit turn? Yeah? So we can get everybody in there. Just a little bit. All right, one, two, three? All right. Do you mind getting one step out, getting one?
Sure, absolutely. Absolutely.
Great.
Thank you.
We need a motion for that?
Yes, we will need a motion to approve that.
Okay. I'd like to make the motion that we approve the National Volunteer Appreciation Week proclamation.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion?
I would just, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say thank you to all of the volunteers. You don't get enough thanks as probably as you deserve, but it means a lot for what you do for the citizens of Wayne County that y'all touch. And again, just thank you.
I feel the same feeling because volunteerism is just fantastic. Any other comments? All right, being none? All those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Hardeston?
Thank you. Next, we'll have a presentation of a service plaque to former Wayne County Planning Board Chairman Chris Cox, and this will be done by Vice Chairman Wayne A. Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Chris Cox. Wayne County, the County of Wayne extends an appreciation to Chris Cox for 17 years of service on the Wayne County Planning Board, serving eight of those years as chairman. On behalf of the citizens, we thank you for your commitment to the planning and development of Wayne County, this dated April 19th, 2022. And we don't go anywhere because we've got other plans for you. But really, thank you for what you do. Chris came on the board when I was on the planning board many, many years ago.
2003.
Yep. He does an outstanding job, and he does a lot of behind-the-scenes things for Wayne County that a lot of people don't know. But thank you again.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it. I really do. I enjoy giving back to the community. I'm just glad that I can share some of my knowledge and experience. I have to say, I'm leaving the board this time in very good hands. We have a good board with Gordon, you know, there. And I have to say, our current planner, Barry Gray, he did a great job hiring him. He's good. So Wayne County's in good hands.
Well, we certainly appreciate your contribution because you're sorely going to be missed. You definitely left a real footprint. It says Chris Cox on it for Wayne County and the planning board, and we thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we need to get a picture here. So we're going to stand for that as well. Short guys have to do this, you know?
Just look straight up at the cameras and let me know when you see that one. I can get one here and send it to you if you want me to.
That'd be great.
Okay. Do you mind coming down a little bit? You guys may be squishing in that one.
Okay.
All right, one, two, three? All right, there you go.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Next, we'll have Mr. Dustin Pittman here, who's chairman of the JCPC, and he will present the upcoming JCPC funding report. So we appreciate Dustin being here.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman.
Thank you, Mr. Hardeston. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to do things a little differently today. So as the chairman of JCPC, I want to make sure that I provide this commission with an update on how things are going in Wayne County. And if we get through this thing and it sounds like I'm scaring you, then I'm doing my job because there are some data and there's some numbers out there that you need to be aware of as members of the county commission that are not looking very good right now. So just a little background, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council is a county board that administers funds that are provided by the state of North Carolina to community-based programs to address juvenile needs and concerns in our community. I've been a member of JCPC since 2015, when I was appointed by this county commission, and I've been chairman of that organization since 2019. You do have a funding plan. I'll get to details on that in a minute, but that funding plan is our recommendation as a whole JCPC for how to allot those funds. But I wanted to give you a heads up. So over the last few years, we have noticed some trends in the data that involve juveniles in Wayne County, and it's our responsibility, I believe, to make you aware of these things because they may become issues before this commission. I'm not asking you for money today, today, but it may be back in the future to ask for money because that's something that we have to have to be able to do this. So each time a juvenile is received into our system, Kristi Howell is our two-court counselor, she's here with me today. She and her team go through an intake process with those individuals. That intake process includes a number of screening tools and assessments. The primary one that we use is a risk and needs assessment tool. Now, we use something fancy called a YAZI. We've been doing that for about a year and a half now. I'm still trying to learn that one and fully understand it. But it's a tool that gets us not just what the situation is that's brought them into the court system, but kind of gets behind the scenes with the juvenile, helps us understand their home situation, helps us understand their needs, and what are the risks that they are facing. Every juvenile does this at intake. If the juvenile actually goes into the system and is adjudicated or is put on probation or anything like that, that process is repeated multiple times throughout their time with juvenile court so that we get updated data as they move along. And this is where delinquency court differs significantly from what you may be familiar with the adult court system because we're not looking to punish a juvenile that comes to court. We're looking to get behind the issue. We're looking to address the problem so that this juvenile doesn't come back. We want to make sure that we understand what is the trigger? Why are you doing this? Where is this coming from? And then we try our best to put services in place behind in that home situation, in that world that they live in, in their little world, to make sure that we address the problem. So the data that we get from this risk and needs tool gives us the ability to actually do some of these things. We compile this data each year. We review it as a JCPC on behalf of the county commission, and we compare that data to other local counties, counties similar to us. And we also compare that data to the state average because we want to see where does Wayne County sit in reference to the state. And that's where the data gets very troubling. So I want to highlight this by saying that this data is based on juveniles assessed by the Division of Juvenile Justice. This isn't a fair cross-section of the population. These are only the individuals who have presented to the criminal court system either because they were referred by the school system for a complaint or an issue, they were petitioned by law enforcement for some type of criminal activity, or a member of the public came into the juvenile justice office and brought forth a concern. And so just going to start hitting some numbers. Of our youth, 58.1% assessed in the last year have either a misdemeanor or a felony prior adjudication. They've had a prior offense. That is 150% increase, one and a half time increase over the last four years, and that number represents three times the state average. Three times. 37% of parents report or through collateral contacts, we determine that 37% of parents are unable to supervise these children. They're willing, they want to, but they can't. Now, this might be the parent that's working two or three jobs and is never in the home, or this might be the parent with substance abuse concerns or mental health concerns that just lacks the ability. But 37% of youth that enter our system have parents that are unable to provide adequate supervision to them. 36% of youth in our system have attempted to run away from home at least once in the last year. That is more than three times the state average, and that's what's happening right here in Wayne County. 48% of our youth, and this data is accurate as of the end of 2020, we changed the risk assessment tool, and so the data gets a little squirrely. But at the end of 2020, 48% of youth assessed fell into risk level five. So risk level goes from one to five. 48% of our youth that we deal with in the system that Ms. Howell and her staff work with every day and our community-based programs from JCPC work with every day are at the highest risk level. That's nearly four times the state average for a county. That's where we are. Nearly 80% of youth assessed by the Division of Juvenile Justice in this community have a substance use handicap of some type. 80%, primarily marijuana, but 80% have a substance use handicap. Of that 80%, more than half have not received counseling, therapy, or any services of any kind to address that substance use need. These are unaddressed concerns we're dealing with. 89.4%. Nine out of every 10 youth that come into the Division of Juvenile Justice system, nine out of every 10 have a mental health diagnosis. More than half, it's unaddressed. That number is nearly five times the state average. Those are the problems we're facing right here. 76.1% of youth have behavioral concerns, significant behavioral concerns in the school system. Significant behavioral concerns are identified as individuals who have been suspended more than 10 days in the past school year. 76% of youth that appear in our system have that problem. We have a program, the Structured Day Program. I call them the alternative to the Wayne County Alternative School. They are the ones that when someone cannot be in a regular school setting and cannot even thrive in the Wayne County Alternative School, Structured Day takes them in. Structured Day provides some education. We have some great assistance from the school board with that, providing teachers and providing some assistance to have that program in full existence. But a great deal of the funding for that comes from JCPC and from this county. But that's one of the concerns we're addressing. And here's the one that I'm here for. Here's the reason that I'm here today. This is something that I've been watching since I first stepped into JCPC, and I've watched it grow, and I've watched it concern, and I've got to say something. We got to do something. 58% of youth assessed by our system either self-identify as gang members or directly associated with gang members. 58%, folks. That number has increased 250% over the last four years. It nearly doubled between 19 and 20 when we saw the beginnings of COVID start to hit our numbers and affect our system. Folks, we have an obligation as a community, we have an obligation as a JCPC, we have an obligation as the workers in the Division of Juvenile Justice and our community-based programs to address these concerns. I'm not here to tell you that I have the silver bullet, I have the magic pill, I have some answer. I'm not here to offer that to you and sell that to you. I wish I did. But what I can tell you is that as JCPC, we are taking steps to address this problem. During our funding and part of the funding plan that you have before you, allot some additional monies to the Restorative Justice for Juveniles program to essentially study the problem. Now, I'm going to tell you, I hate that idea of a government study. Let's study the problem, let's look at it. But in this type of situation, we've got to understand more about that gang activity problem, and we've also got to understand what alternatives are out there. Because the thing is, we've never offered, in the time that I've been on JCPC and even going back to the beginnings of JCPC, we've never offered a gang intervention or a gang activity or any type of program like that in this community. So we've got to find one. We've got to find some alternative out there. Now, that's the point that I'm probably going to be back before this commission on my knees and begging this commission for some money to address that problem. But it's not today. But that's where we are. Things are continuing to get worse. Now, I'll tell you, none of this, and I want to make sure I say this to Kristi in the room, none of this is a slide against Kristi and her staff. They do amazing work. What we have done here in Wayne County, and I've practiced in a couple of different counties as a juvenile defense attorney, we have managed to make sure that we are dealing with the more significant risk of youth. The ones that are the nominal concerns, the neighbor complaints, the things that don't warrant being in our court system. Ms. Howell and her staff do an amazing job of keeping those issues out of our court system, but still addressing them through diversionary plans and other alternatives. They're being addressed, they're just not making it into this level of where we are. But the youth we're seeing, the problems we're seeing are significant. I believe we're at six violent crimes this year alone involving individuals under the age of 18. I can tell you that I, as an attorney, represent one individual charged with first-degree murder who is under the age of 18. That's happened this year. I represent two individuals charged with a robbery with a dangerous weapon that happened in this year, in this calendar year. And so things aren't heading in the right direction for 2022 with that as well. But with that, you have the funding plan before you and the way that we recommend the allocation of the funds, and I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman, if time permits, of the funding plan or any of the issues that I've addressed with the commission.
Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Hardeston, can you provide us with your statistics, please?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
And number two, there's a significant moral health problem here in Wayne County, and I personally don't think it's being addressed, you know? I'd like to see something come out of that. But thank you for your service and what's happening with the youth.
Yeah, I have a comment. It's just a comment. I think overall, you address, you know, a hot topic. I mean, there's a lot of violence going on here, a lot of mental health issues, a lot of drug abuse, all those factors. But I think one of the things that caused these young people to do those things is a lack of anything to do. There's not enough activities for them, things to look forward to. And I think if we got some people that would think outside the box and give the young people something to look forward to, I think it would probably, you know, change their attitudes. I think that it would make them, you know, make them want to, you know, take care of themselves, you know? When you can have somewhere where you can go to and there's music that you like, you know? To be honest, here in Wayne County, there's activities, but it's based on mostly the older generations here. And I think we really need to tap into that, give them something to look forward to.
Yes, sir.
So they'll come back and not leave. That's what we're having right now. A lot of kids are going away to college, they're not going to come back. They don't have any good memories here, you know? But thank you for what you're doing.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Mr. Pittman, when you bring the children or the young adults into your system, do you interview them and ask them questions on why they were led in these directions that we're experiencing here? These statistics are very scary. I agree with you 100%. But usually, they would like to share information with you, I hope, why they're going in the directions they're going.
Yes.
And what is these gang members offering these children that society cannot offer?
So I'll take that last one first. They're offering them something to do, somewhere to belong, something to be involved in, something that is fun for them, that we're not necessarily offering otherwise. But every juvenile that comes into the system, Ms. Howell and her staff assess them as part of the intake process for the last 20-some-odd years. It's been Frankie Dawson, who's been our intake court counselor, who has done that process. Some of it is just a sit-down, one-on-one interview with the juvenile and their parent or guardian. And then some of that are assessment tools that are evidence-based practices, where this data comes from, or evidence-based tools that we use to try and ask questions that they will answer honestly, but will help us see behind that curtain. Because the thing is, if you sit down with most youth, and I'll tell you, as a defense attorney, as someone who has represented youth in this community for a decade, as someone who has asked those questions of my clients, I know I don't get honest answers to them. I know they're not even, even when I'm standing beside them and fighting for them, they're not giving me the correct answer, and they're not giving me the truth. But these tools that we use through the Division of Juvenile Justice, I believe, help us ask questions around it to get behind it. And I think they do a great job of it.
One thing that concerns me, it says 36% attempt to run away from home.
Yes.
What in their home life provoked them to do so?
And where are they running to?
Exactly.
That is the question.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
The key word here is youth. These young people are going to grow up to be adults, and if we can curb this while they are youth, the key word, the long-range effect is what you're looking at because, and we've all gone through that stage as a youth. I put a lot of gray hair on my momma Dita's head. But thankfully, you know, I had the supervision at home. So many of these youth today, like you said earlier, do not.
Sir.
But, you know, if we can curb this, and Barbara said, your numbers are scary. So we're behind you. I don't know how much financially we can hit.
I was liking what I was hearing.
But, you know, we know that y'all are sincere in what you're trying to do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And, you know, if you can connect with the schools, I mean, when I was a kid, schools had dances, you know? And I know it's different times, you know, but, you know, you can eliminate some troublemakers and you can have people that look forward to those type of things, something simple as a dance, you know? Maybe the college can do something, maybe alumni can do a dance, you know? I mean, it's, you know, it's just so many options, but we have to try them, you know?
And many of our programs that we have work directly in our school system. Building Peace in Schools is a program that you'll see in the funding report. They are in a school. They're in a school environment. They're also at our Structured Day Program. Their mission is to, exactly what it says, build peace. They're trying to change some of that thought process, that mentality when there's some type of an issue. They're also in the schools providing mentorship. Again, those are things that, we say we've got $419,000 from the state to a lot, it sounds like a lot of money. It's not when you break it down. It's not when you're trying to provide services to youth. But we are in the schools, and we have a great relationship with our school system. But we can only seem to get things so far.
You know, when I, I'm sorry. You know, when I was a city councilman, I advocated for a program for 24 hours of peace, and they're doing it nationwide. And I was told that it would cause balance. And I, you know, how could it cause balance when there's already violence here? You know, I think it would give the people something to look forward to, and maybe that's one of those individuals that does that. I can actually connect you with them and, you know, see if the program could be done here at one point or another. But thank you, guys. Thank you.
Mr. Hardeston?
Dustin, I don't think people
Dustin, I don't think people realize the amount of gang activity that we have in Wayne County. We've had several instances, you know, at athletic events, dances at schools, I mean, you know, it's, it's becoming a problem, and I don't think people realize either that the gang members are recruiting eight, nine, and 10-year-olds.
Yes, sir.
As their runners, you know, to, to be initiated per se as a gang member. They look up to the older ones because their home life may not be as some of us were blessed to have. So it's an issue, and, and, and the gang issue probably, is probably something that I probably look at more than anything because that affects everybody, so it can affect everybody.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you, Mr. Commissioner, one of the, the concerns we have, we're looking at what are the number of complaints we're getting, different types of offenses. The number one complaint received by the Division of Juvenile Justice right now in our community is VNE motor vehicle. And when I say it is, is breaking into a motor vehicle, it is not just the top one, it is well past and beyond the top, when we're talking about at least 100 complaints received compared to 20 for the next category. What my experience with those is, is that you have these youth that are potentially gang-involved or want to be gang-involved or think they are gang-involved, who are going out and breaking into 20, 30, 40 cars. What are they doing with this stuff? They're taking it back to the gang. We're never able to locate the stuff, law enforcement generally can't find it, most of the, if it, if it gets past the, a lot of times they do catch them kind of in the act, but if they don't catch it in the act, the stuff's gone. And the reason it's gone is because it goes into that world that, that we're not necessarily able to break into. That's one of the things we're seeing, which exactly is correct, it's affecting our community. People are getting cars broken into or, you know, opening the door of an unlocked car and taking some item out of it.
And that, that escalates to carjacking, to, you know, unexpected people that stop lots, I mean, I mean, it can escalate to a
Yes, sir.
Situation that we don't, we don't want in Wayne County, or surrounding counties for that matter.
Yes, sir.
Well, you know what? We have to make, make it where it's uncool to be part of a gang. How do you do that? You have to do it with marketing, you have to kind of put the faces in the neighborhoods on billboards that shows what happens. You have to plant the seed before it happens.
Yes, sir.
So if somebody knows, hey, I see a billboard and there's a person that took a life and now he's behind bars, as ugly as it may seem, it gives somebody the opportunity to think before they, you know, commit a crime like that. And some people may say, oh, we don't want that in our county, those images, but we have to do something. And I think planting the seed before you react to something, I think it helps tremendously. So maybe that's something that could be part of the funding that you're going to get, doing some marketing where people can see, hey, this is what's going to happen to you, just like the young men were in the paper that you said were breaking into the cars. You know, I saw, I knew one of those young men, he used to come into my, my place of business, so it was very disturbing to see he was arrested. You know, he was, I think, 15 or 16. I was surprised he was even in the paper, you know, at that age, you know? But there's something to go, there has to be done, you know?
Yes, sir.
Well, Mr. Pittman, if you, you've done a good job of scaring this board, and I hope that the, the community at large hears those numbers because they are shocking, they are really shocking. Now, that said, I think you also see the concern of this board.
Yes, sir.
Each one of us individually. So go develop the program, go forth, get the program, and it gives me an opportunity to push one of the agenda of this board, and that is a grant writer. We need to find a grant writer to go out and seek and find grant dollars so that you can implement the programs that we need to have in our community.
Yes, sir.
So go develop the program, and then we'll, we'll, we'll find the, we'll find the money.
Yes, sir.
You go and develop the program.
And Mr. Pittman, the gentleman who ran the 24 Hours of Peace, his name is Hassan Sharif, and I can get his contact information for you.
Yes, thanks, sir, I'll look into that as well.
Thank you.
So you accomplished your goal today, you shocked us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
And we do have on the, just on the agenda of the funding plan.
We do need to have a motion to approve the funding.
I'd like to make a motion that we approved the funding plan for the JCPC.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say the five, I'll raise your right hand. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
We are. If you'll, if you'll allow me, we've got a public hearing that was scheduled at 9:15, but this was so important, we kind of allowed you to kind of go over your time limit, Dustin.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that in mind, I will call to, call to order a public hearing to hear comments on considering the sale of 2010 Dixie Trail in Goldsboro, North Carolina to Project Barry and to determine the conditions of sale. Mr. Honegut?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board is aware, the Wayne County currently owns the location at 210 Dixie Trail, and we've been using that as storage, we've used it as a site for vaccines, but one of the things we wanted to do, and I think was the goal of this board, was to put it back on the public books, or put it back and make it a public entity and turn it back to warehousing, manufacturing, so we can really take that and get jobs and investment back in Goldsboro and Wayne County, especially off in the John Street area. We are working with the state and our economic development region, Mark Pope, we are working with Project Barry. Project Barry has an offer and a contract to purchase the building right now for $2.2 million. But part of their proposal is they are looking at 94 permanent jobs over a three-year period, year 116, year 260, year 318, with an average wage of $50,260, and that is also with full-time benefits as well. So that is well above our median wage here in the county. They're also looking at a total capital investment of $10.1 million, with 3.6 million being in real property and another 6.5 million in personal property. So we do have this as an incentive, we've been working with them on the price, and they're also working with the state of North Carolina right now on some different grants, like the 1NC Fund and looking at the Building Reuse Fund.
Okay, is anyone that'd like to come forth and speak at this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, the, our attorney did want to say, we're working with them also, though maybe there's some lease of the property as well until we can get to closing, which will be $18,000 per month.
With that in mind, if there's no one to speak, I close the public hearing. All right, we now are moving on. Mr. Honegut?
Yeah, a motion to approve.
You need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we got a motion to approve the sale. Any discussion on the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me make the motion because I had told them we'd never sell this business, this building, and I'm having to eat fruit, so I want to be the one to.
But thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, but also if we could add to the motion, contingent upon county attorney approval of final sales contract agreement.
Are we adding that to the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I'll expect my cigar at closing.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify, I'll raise your right hand.
Mr. Honegut, please get a photo of that.
Yeah.
I will get it, I will be on my porch and I will get to send you a
Is that Wayne behind you too, Commissioner Ray?
It went, it took long enough, it went from a $20 cigar to a tap of nugget.
So, but, but again, I do want to thank Mark Pope and the work that he, he did as well to, to help bring this company to Wayne County also.
Well, I think Goldsboro and Wayne County are going to be very pleased with when the announcement's made in regards to this company and opening up. I think it was a, a good move all the way around. We, we've turned a white elephant into a shining star.
Yes, sir.
We have. Okay, now, next special presentation, Mr. Honegut?
Is motion to approve Community College Month proclamation, as presented by Wayne County Community College President, Dr. Patty Pfeifer, and we appreciate Dr. Pfeifer being here again.
Thank you, Dr. Pfeifer, for allowing me to kind of move to another topic.
No, that's not a problem, your business is important.
Thank you.
So I want to first start by thanking the county commissioners for the continued support of Wayne Community College, not just in the month of April, but every day, and, and allowing us here to celebrate Community College Month. We, and your public support of Wayne Community College for our students, our faculty and staff are invaluable, and I'd like to publicly say thank you and appreciate all that you do for Wayne Community College. Now, I'd like to tell you a little bit about the value of the community college education, not that you don't know, but for the listeners that listen in our meetings. As you know, the quality of community college education is exceptional and the cost is about a quarter to a third the cost of a public four-year institution. The American Association of Community Colleges report that community colleges serve nearly 12 million students on an annual basis, and of those students, 29% are first-generation students. 20% of those students report having some type of disability. 15% are single parents. 8% of students have already earned bachelor's degrees and are coming back for more education. 4% of those students nationally are veterans. The return on investment for students with an associate degree is pretty significant. Nationally speaking, community college graduates earn almost double that of individuals who have less than a high school diploma and 20% more than those who have just a high school diploma. A recent economic study conducted by MC slash Burning Glass, excuse me, Burning Glass, reported the average return for a WCC graduate is 25% in higher earnings. The report stated that Wayne Community College students benefit cost ratio is 5.3, which basically means for every dollar invested in their own education, they have an accumulative $5.30 in higher earnings over their lifetime. From a taxpayer perspective, which I'm sure that's important to you guys, Wayne Community College generates more in tax revenue than it takes in. These benefits to taxpayers consist primarily of taxes that the state and local governments will collect from the added revenue created in our state. The study also goes on to say, benefits to taxpayers will also consist of savings generated by the improved lives and lifestyles of WCC students and the corresponding reduced government services needed. Education is significantly correlated with a variety of quality of life and lifestyle changes. By now, you all know that my motto is WCC or Wayne Community College changes students' lives every day for the better. It is evident that Wayne Community College is, has a significant impact, not only on the lives of our students, but also the county and our state. Additionally, the college is working to prepare a well-prepared pipeline of future workers that we need so desperately. The worker shortage is not only a national problem, but one we are facing right here in Wayne County. Our mission is to serve and to provide the educational, training, and cultural needs of our community, and we take that mission very seriously as we try to make Wayne County and the Wayne Community, and Wayne Community College the very best in the state of North Carolina. In recognition of that, I propose that the county adopt this proclamation declaring April to be Community College Month. May I read it for you?
Please.
Okay. Whereas the United States of America is home to more than 1,000 two-year associate degree-granting institutions that serve nearly 12 million students, and whereas community colleges are uniquely American and a uniquely American educational model designed to guarantee access to affordable, high-quality, higher education for all people, and whereas community colleges guarantee fair admissions for all students, attracting the most demographically and socio-economically diverse students, and whereas without community colleges, many American students would not be able to access higher education, and whereas North Carolina's great 58 community colleges provide opportunities for more than 500,000 students annually, and whereas Wayne Community College's owned Wayne Community College, which regularly proves itself as the best of the 58, improves the lives of students with education and training, helps businesses and industries stay current and grow, offers community members cultural experiences, and serves as a vital center of the community, all efforts designed to meet the diverse needs of the people it serves, and whereas for every dollar invested in their education at Wayne Community College, they receive a return of $5.30 in higher future earnings. Whereas Wayne Community College not only contributes to personal growth, health, and success of Wayne County's residents, it also adds $114.2 million in income to the county's economy in the fiscal year 2019-20, and whereas the Congress, by Senate Joint Resolution 158, created National Community College Month to recognize the institution's significance, contributions to the strength, vitality, and prosperity of our nation. Now, therefore, it is resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby declare the month of April 2022 as Community College Month in Wayne County, North Carolina, adopted on this day, the 19th day of April 2020, signed by Chairman Joe C. Dottary.
Do I have a motion? I'm sure that I know someone that'd like to make this motion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we passed a proclamation declaring April as Community College Month, and it's also an honor and a privilege to sit on the board at the college. Y'all are doing a fantastic job.
Appreciate it.
And thank y'all for what you do.
Sure, very, very welcome.
That's the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify, I'll raise your right hand. And I'd like to ask the board to step down, and we'd like to have a photo.
Absolutely, and I do have a Wayne Community College pin for each of you, so during the month of April, I'd love you to sport this pin, but really, you need to do it every day of the year. Wayne Community College is important to this county, and I think you all are very aware of that.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you.
I think she's got a degree in salesmanship, too.
That's right. She gets these
And it's passionate about what we do.
You get these old windows coming, come down here, take a picture for you.
Absolutely.
And you got, and Barbara said you had a woman, too.
We'll get one more just in case, one, two, three.
I'm just gonna wait and check which one it is.
I missed that couple of red hair today. I'm probably
Can I get two members out here? All right, one, two, three. Okay.
And then we just hang tight here, make sure they get the picture for the county here. We're good, Carol?
I'm good.
Good.
I'm trying to get your pin for you.
Here are these hands.
Wear them in pride.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure it wore mine. I appreciate it.
That is a blue tie.
Hey, that's not, that's, that's, when you call it blue, that's not blue.
We wear it with honor.
We'll give everybody a moment to put it on.
That's right.
That's right. Y'all have a wonderful day.
Is it gonna stick on?
Yeah, it'll stick on, mate.
Look, you can't put it, Wayne. It's got landed on it.
I'll put it on this side.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to feed.
It did. Okay, we're gonna move now to unfinished business.
There is no appointment.
No appointment.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We've got unfinished business now. Update on street assessment, preliminary numbers for Lane Tree Village and Eagle Ridge, and this will be done by Andrew Neal, our staff attorney, and I do want to thank Andrew and Barry and Kayla for all the work that they really did once the, we made the motion to begin looking and try to validate petitions. There was a lot of time and effort that was put into checking and rechecking and making sure the postcards came in correctly, checking behind people who may have not filled it out correctly, so there was a lot of work done by staff to get to this point, and I do want to thank them for that.
And I think Barry purposely missed today's meeting, so he didn't have to respond to any of the citizens. So I put together a brief slideshow. Admittedly, there's a lot of confusion about this statute because whoever wrote it probably didn't go do it the way I would have done it, but I'll start by saying the county, under state law, doesn't have any authority to maintain or improve roads. So we're not the city of Goldsboro, we're not a municipality, so we don't maintain roads. The only way that we can do this, our statutory authority is under Article 9 of 153A, specifically 158-205, and that's the means by which a county can come in, in a private subdivision, and then they can front the money, they can finance the project, and then assess that to individual property owners. Once that's done, then it becomes part of the DOT system, and DOT takes over the maintenance, just like they would any highway or anything like that. In addition to the statutory authority, this board, or the previous board, I should say, adopted Resolution 2015-2016, which governs any street assessment project within Wayne County. It adds some additional parameters to what the state statute lays out. Specifically, it calls for two public hearings before a preliminary resolution. By statute, you only have to have one. Additionally, it puts some financial requirements in there that the board has to consider. So in short, the requirements under state law is 75% of the property owners, that make up 75% of all the lineal feet of the land abutting the streets to be improved, must sign the petition. So that's a little bit different than just 75% of the homes. The planning department, Barry and his people, actually have to go in there, calculate the amount of roads in the subdivision, and then you come up with a net number that they have to achieve in order to achieve, to reach the petition. And as I said, once the project is approved, DOT comes in, we petition them, and then they would approve the roads. So this, the resolution establishing the policy was adopted in 2015. In 2016, there were some petitions that started rolling in. Only three actually were certified at the time of meeting the 75%. We had a number that came in, however, only three actually met, and pursuant to the county policy, those are considered in the order they are received. So the first one that was received that was successful was North Creek and Canterbury. That's in, that's just south of the Lane Tree subdivision. So that project was approved, it went through, and it was fin, and it was finished in 2018. So those assessments are actually currently, some owners decided to pay it off all at once, some chose the 10-year assessment payment, and so those are in the process of being paid back now. The next two successful petitions were first from the Lane Tree subdivision and then Eagle Ridge subdivisions. So since 2018, no new projects have been undertaken. That was a, just a decision by this board. The board just chose not to move forward. I know in the spring of 2020, there was some discussion about maybe rolling forward with some more, but then that was in April, and then COVID hit shortly thereafter, so obviously we were a little sidetracked. But then moving forward, in February 20, February of this year, the county received preliminary construction estimates for street improvements for Lane Tree and Eagle Ridge. DOT did come in and provide an initial estimate. It was determined by Chip Crumpler, the Assistant County Manager, and then the Planning Director. Those were too low. They probably weren't accurate representations of what it would cost to do those projects. So we went out with one of our engineers and had them provide a more realistic estimate. I want to be clear, the county paid for those estimates. The citizens are not responsible for reimbursing the county. So any of those, if the project was approved, they would be rolled into the assessments, but the county fronts all that money, and if it doesn't move forward, then the county's responsible for paying that. So I want to make that clear, any work that's been done to this point, no property owners would have to pay for that. So you can see the numbers, and Barry Gray went over these back in March at a meeting. The Lane Tree was right at 14.9, or excuse me, 4.9 million for the total projection project cost. Estimated assessment per lot was $14,390.85. These were just very rough estimates. They didn't include any legal fees, any administrative fees that would also get rolled in, and you can see the cost for Eagle Ridge was about $475,000, and then the assessment was around the same, $14,848. The Eagle Ridge subdivision is much smaller, it's got 32 lots, and then the Lane Tree, painting myself in the corner, 300 and change, I have to look it up, three, it's on the petition, but I can't remember off the top of my head, but. So then at the March 1st, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting, the board directed staff to provide cost information to Lane Tree and Eagle Ridge property owners and to verify that the petition still met statutory requirements. Especially in the Lane Tree subdivision, there's been a lot of property transfers since 2016, and there's been a lot of questions from realtors, from closing attorneys, whether or not the assessments are gonna move forward. So you had a lot of property owners that really did not, weren't even aware of the program, and they didn't sign the 2016 petition. So before we move forward with going out for construction bids and incurring additional costs, the recommendation from staff was that we go out and make sure that we still have a valid petition to move forward. So that's what we did right now. Let me move forward real quick. So, and those are the reasons that we sent out the mailers that we did. Like I said, there's a large amount of property transfers since 2016, and the new owners may want to change the petition status. There's a lot of confusion amongst owners concerning the policies and procedures of the street assessment programs, and then we wanted to educate the current owners, who may not have been around in 2016, about what their options are and whether or not they had to join the petition or what that means for them. So going back, on March 10th, we mailed out a packet of information to all current property owners. What Allen and the Tax Office did, they basically redid the petition force and updated all the property owners to the new property owners, so we had a current names, we had current addresses and everything like that. So we mailed out a letter containing assessment background, cost estimates, and instructions on how the new property owners, or even the old property owners, if they wanted to change their petition status, how they could do it. We sent out a copy of the then-current petition, and then a prepaid postcard on which they could fill out, write their name, sign it, and then check a box saying whether or not they wanted to stay on the petition, or if they wanted to be removed. And then we also put together a frequently asked question list that we kind of learned some lessons over our first project that we thought would be helpful, specifically, what happens if I sell my property in year five of a 10-year payoff? How does that work? So we thought that would be helpful, helpful as well. And then we also posted the materials online on the county website, so anybody could find it there. So we mailed all those out, we had an overwhelming response. I think we probably had a couple hundred mailers that got returned from Lane Tree and then also from Eagle Ridge, obviously less from Eagle Ridge. We did have a lot of phone calls as well. We had some that were returned, postcards that were returned that were not filled out. For any of those that we did find, we had, we actually mailed them a letter, or we called them if we had a phone number for them, and we notified them that their mailer wasn't completed. How did they want to proceed? Did they want to come into the office and fill out a new form? Do they want us to mail it back? How did they want, want to proceed? We also had forms in the office, both in the planning department and the county manager's office. Anybody, if they didn't feel like mailing it, they could walk in and just fill out a form here. So we were very, you know, however people wanted to do it, we were open to it. We did put an April 1st deadline on it for responses. That was just to make sure that we could move forward. We honored any requests, no matter when it was received. We even received one yesterday, and we updated the petition. So we received a lot after April 1st, that was not a cutoff. Under state law, they have up until the project is confirmed to remove themselves. We have to honor any requests. And these were the prelim, the numbers that we received. So back, in Lane Tree, the properties required to meet the threshold, statutory threshold is 262. In the 2016 petition, they had 276, and then after the mailers were received, as of today, and we even got one yesterday back, which dropped the number down a little bit more. The current number of properties on the petition is 179. I think in the agenda packet was 180. The one yesterday received another no vote, so that dropped it down to 179. For Eagle Ridge, the properties required to meet the 75% threshold is 24. The 2016 position was right at 24, so they were right, right there at it. And then the current number of properties on the petition were 19, so we had several that mailed in that asked to be removed. So those are the current numbers as they stand now. As you can see, none of them meet the threshold. Lane Tree, much, much less than Eagle Ridge. So we wanted, like I said, we wanted to move forward with this with step one, to make sure we had a petition before the county encouraged any more costs associated with engineering, design fees, going out to bid, anything like that, because the county would be responsible for fronting that money. As I stated, any money that's spent, that the county put up to this point, no property owners would have to repay that, anything along those lines. So that's an update on where we're at right now. Are there any questions about the process or what we've done to this point?
Mr. Neal, I commend you and your staff on what you've done. We love a lot of work we need to do. Does the property owners have any recourse other than the county?
That's been explored. I know in Lane Tree specifically, I've been told there's a Facebook group, and some property owners have talked about other options, so exploring options against the developer. And then also, there's been some talk in the smaller subdivisions, so the different phases, maybe some of those property owners can join up and either petition DOT themselves and pool their money themselves, or form some sort of quasi HOA or residential neighborhood where maybe they do some street improvements. Now, it may not get them up to DOT, but maybe it would get it to where everybody's a little bit more satisfied, and that could be as simple as filling potholes, some ditching, minor ditching, things along those lines. So I think that is being explored. Obviously, the county wouldn't have any role in those.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And that 75% threshold, that's something that is part of the general statute.
It is. Yep, that's, that's laid out by general statute, so it's got to meet the 75%.
Because it's unfortunate, you know, you look at Eagle Ridge, five people stopped the whole process from them getting paid, so.
Right.
And I'm surprised, there was a lot of people in the Lane Tree that even were considering it, you know, so.
We, we knew there had been a lot of property transfers. We were a little taken back at just the number of how low it dropped. I think that that number Barry calculated, I think it was somewhere low 50% approval rate of the project, so, well below the 75%.
Okay, any other questions? I do want to point out that I think it was a great recommendation of staff that we go out and hire an engineer to get a more accurate number. The number that was given to us originally from NCDOT was just so low. If we had gone out and got petitions based upon that number, and then we got down to the, the actual time of actually making the improvements, and it would have been, I want to say it was like three times the number that was estimated by NCDOT. So it was a great move on our part, I think, to spend those dollars and get the engineer to give us.
I think there would have been a lot of sticker shock when we went out.
There would have been a lot of pushback from the community, that's for sure.
Well, having history for Door Creek, Canterbury, kind of.
Well, that's true. That's true. Okay, any other comments?
The, and I know, Mr. Chairman, you raised this point. I'm not aware of any other outstanding petitions because the ones that were turned into the county did not meet the 75% threshold, so at this point, there's no pending petitions or any other projects for consideration.
Right.
I, I do think it may be good, since we extended it out, just to entertain a motion to reject both petitions, to formally move past, to, so there's formal action just to reject the petition.
Okay, would I have a motion to reject?
So move.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? You're a nun, all those in favor of the motion signify by raising your right hand. And we can move on. And again, I do want to thank staff for, for just a lot of work in a short amount of period. Okay, Mr. Haddock.
Next is a motion to approve the proposed ordinance regulating shooting ranges within the planning jurisdiction of Wayne County. The board is aware, we had a public hearing at our last meeting and a vote, but according to our rules, if it was not a unanimous vote, it is brought up at the next meeting for approval, and if it approved by majority vote this time, it can be approved.
Okay, I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the proposed ordinance regulating shooting ranges within the planted jurisdiction of Wayne County.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir. Last, our last commissioner meeting, I voted against it because it wasn't, it wasn't about the ordinance and what the ordinance does, it's about, I was trying to open people's ears up pertaining to all the violence that's taking place, all the gun violence as well. You know, I think that, you know, you should have a safe place if you want to shoot your weapon, but I want clearly people to understand that there's a serious issue in this county. Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? You're a nun, all those in favor of the motion signify by raising your right hand. Thank you.
Next, we do have our consent agenda that we did go over at our eight o'clock briefing, and we present the consent agenda to you for your approval.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, my motion, we approved the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on motions? You're a nun, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, moving to new business.
All right, thank you to the chair. First is motion to approve the following policies regarding the use of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds to the county of Wayne, the subaward policy, and conflict of interest policy. And if the board will remember, we approved three similar policies to get for ARPA at our last meeting, but again, I also want to quote our county attorney. We are still waiting for final rules and regulations from the feds on how to spend the money, but what we are trying to do now is to get all our policies and procedures in place once the final rulings do come down.
Okay.
He did, and just real quick, I can go over the two. The conflict of interest policy, I think is pretty self-explanatory. That lays out a process by which the finance department and county management vet all contractors and sub-grantees who petition for ARP funds, so there's a process that we have to go through. If you recall, actually, a couple of months ago, we updated our county conflict of interest policy, and then subsequently, the U.S. Treasury came out with some guidance that said what we have in place is not good enough. So the conflict of interest policy, like I said, lays out those procedures and establishes some forms that, that finance actually has to complete before we move forward with those projects. Probably your, your more important policy is your subaward policy. Let me move down. This is probably the most pertinent part. So under the federal guidelines for ARP funds, when you engage in projects, you have two options. You, you basically hire or you contract with two different sets of people. One is a contractor, so that's pretty straightforward. So say, for example, you just want to go build a building, or if you just want to engage in some stormwater work, you put it out for bid, and then you retain a contractor who does the work for you. And that's, in that second paragraph there, is the test. So under the federal regulations, there's a test you have to do, determine whether or not it's a contractor, or is it, is it a sub-grantee? So you can see some of the factors that are at play for the contractor, provides goods and services within normal business operations, provides similar goods or services to many different purchasers, operates in a competitive environment, and provides goods or services that are ancillary to the operation of a federal program. In short, they answer to you. So you go out, you go out for a request for proposals, you find this contractor, and you have oversight over this person. You tell them how you want the project done, you tell them what exactly. You tell them how you want the project done, you tell them what exactly you're going to do. The more probably complicated relationship for ARP funds is going to be your sub-grantee. So, and those are in the first section right there. So, basically, they step into the shoes of the county. So, the county has been awarded these funds. So, if you undertake a program like this, you have identified an organization that can provide services that the county is authorized to provide themselves. And then therefore, you enter into a subaward agreement with them where they run that program. So, probably your best, probably your best illustration of this will be some sort of nonprofit. So, say, for example, you have identified a need in the county that's permissible under ARP. United Way was in here. That's probably a prime example. Maybe there's a service that United Way or another nonprofit can provide that the county is authorized under ARP and state law to provide. And so, therefore, you enter into an agreement where they run that program. And that's not to say you don't have any oversight over them. Actually, you have significant oversight over them, and that's what this policy is laying out. So, before you actually enter into an agreement like that, you have to do a risk assessment on that nonprofit. So, what kind of policies do they have in place? Do they have annual audits? Have they ever been in violation of federal regulations before? Have they had experience with grants and federal regulations? And you assign a risk factor to that organization. Based on that risk factor that you assign, then you subsequently, that details what kind of oversight you have of them. Do you do quarterly monitoring? Do you do monthly? What exactly do you have to do to make sure they're complying with the federal guidelines? Because the penalty for all of this is whatever money that you give your sub-grantee, if they are not following the guidelines, the county will ultimately be responsible for paying that money back to the federal government. So, when you do a subaward, it's very important that we follow these procedures to make sure that we're not on the hook for it. And then there's actually interventions that are laid out. So, if we are monitoring this person, this organization, and we determine that they are not following federal regulations, then there's a multitude of actions we can take. We can shut them down completely, we can remove their grant funding, we can require them to do X amount of steps, more audits, more, you know, quarterly statements, anything along those lines. So, the subaward is probably the reason why it took so long to get to you, because it's pretty complicated. And it's going to be, I think, based off the guidance that we've received from the U.S. Treasury, I'd be hard pressed to identify some local nonprofits that have an infrastructure in place that we really can engage in this. Now, I could be wrong, but it's much stricter than, for example, the CARES money. The CARES money, you know, we gave it to United Way, they kind of vetted that, and then they gave it out. So, it's much more stringent and much more strict than CARES. So, I just want everyone to be aware of that when we, that's not to say you can't go down the subaward route, but there's a lot more compliance that has to, that goes into play. So, it's not as simple as, you know, someone just coming out and saying, you know, I want to do this project on X amount a day, just give me money. Well, no, you have to provide some supporting documentation, provide some policies and procedures that your organization has to assure us that you're going to be in compliance. Because, like I said, ultimately, they step into the shoes of the county, and they have to follow all the federal guidelines, so.
So, if I'm hearing you, it's not only are we responsible, but any of our subcontractors are going to be.
Sub-grantees.
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 Are going to be subject. But if they don't fulfill all the requirements, it really comes back on to the county.
It does. It does.
So, we've got to be very, very careful here.
We do.
That is only limited to those funds coming to the county. It doesn't have to do any with any of these funds that are going to any of the other municipalities. It's only our dollars that we're responsible.
Correct. It's just county dollars. So, the other, and I think I've mentioned this to some people before, but even, you know, I've mentioned nonprofit, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a nonprofit. I mean, it could be another municipality. It could be anyone that steps into the shoes of the county. However, they just have to make sure that they have these policies, they have to adopt all these policies, and they have to have the policies that you adopted before, they have to adopt those. They have to follow all of those, so it's.
And as Mr. Parker stated, the final rule still has not been issued.
And do these particular organizations, do we have to be in business for a certain timeframe?
No, but I would probably think, and Allison can probably chime in, I think the longer that they've been in business, they can demonstrate less risk to the county. So, probably the longer that they've been in business, I think that they would have a lower risk of violations, and therefore, would be in a better position to be awarded these funds.
So, you said if we give, if we give money to another municipality, and they were to give it to, I mean, I know it should be tied to a project, but how does that, I mean, if we give it to somebody, and then they give it to somebody, are we still responsible?
Yes. Yes. So, ideally, whoever in your municipal example that you give it to a municipality for a permissible use, remember, you had those five permissible uses that you passed last time. You still have to identify that permissible use, and then they engage in the project. Now, they could hire a contractor to engage in some sort of infrastructure improvement. I don't know. But in reality, if you gave it to that municipality, that municipality basically sits as Wayne County. It's just like you were engaging in that project.
So, if the contractor doesn't fulfill their obligation, then it flops?
So, under that circumstance, whoever, your subaward, let's say, the city of Goldsboro, just for example, and they gave, they engage in a project, if they don't bid out that contract appropriately, if they don't do competitive bidding, if they don't enter into a contract with the correct uniform guidance provisions or anything along those, potentially, the county would be responsible for repayment of those funds.
So, whoever we actually engage in, they need to have the same rules and.
We would be heavily involved in that project. It would not be a cut a check to somebody else and say, all right, you undertake your project.
I get that. I just want to make sure, because what I'm hearing is whoever we engage with has got to have basically the same rules that we have to make sure that they do, so we're not on the hook.
Correct.
Like we were on another occasion not too long ago.
And that's part of the risk assessment, is do they have the, Andrew was talking about the infrastructure in place, do they have the wherewithal organizationally to have these policies and to monitor them? You know, not just passing a piece of paper, but do they have the policies in place and can they enforce them? So, it is just like what we would expect if we were doing it directly, because it can all come back to us. So, that's going to have to be shown on the front end before we can even issue the, you know.
Mr. Neal and Mr. Honecker, can you make sure that the municipalities are aware of these policies?
They are. And they are. To accept and to spend any of the funds, they've got to have the same policies, and they've gotten the same information.
If I say, could you make sure you get that in writing, that they have a knowledge and knowledge?
And I think, I think overall, that's why we wanted to try to find a grant writer too, because the grant writer could oversee how this money is being allocated, you know? So, I hope that we can find one, because, you know.
We're looking.
Yeah. We really need it.
And I will say too, Allison and I actually were, was it last week, the week before last, with the NCA-CC, the County Commissioner Association actually received some ARP funds where they are going out and hiring recent graduate students who have just graduated, and they're actually going to offer those up to counties for basic tracking. And they're not going to have high-level understanding of this, but in terms of everyday tracking of projects, they certainly can assist with that. So, I think that's going to be a good resource for us.
And I think the league is doing something very similar as well, but what they're looking at is hiring fellows to go out and kind of help manage ARP funds and kind of being a resource for counties, especially the smaller counties who may not have the infrastructure that we have. So, but the concern is with the ARP funding is that there's going to be more clawbacks than you'll ever see, you know, different from the CARES funding.
And the biggest thing is, the U.S. Treasury has said, we're not pre-approving any projects. So, it's not like you can send them an email or send them a letter and saying, hey, this is what we're thinking about doing. Can you sign off on it? They're not doing that.
It's on you.
They just don't have the capacity to do that with the type of money that they've, that's been given out.
So, this is, okay, so we got ARP money, and the CARES money where we had the issue before.
Is gone. Yeah.
That's where we had the issue before.
It is. And we're still working on that.
And we ain't got that ratified.
Hopefully, by the end of the month. You know, again, it was not our issue, it was the municipality's issue.
Do they still have the minute to file?
We have been told it should be fixed by the end of the month.
By the end of the month? Okay.
Yes, Chair.
Yes.
One question, Andrew. The towns also get this ARP funds. Can they co-mingle with our funds, with their funds, or does it have to be kept separate?
So, that's a good question. So, the municipalities in Wayne County, the amount that they receive, so we received 23.9 million. If you remember, the revenue loss portion, you can designate, you can take a lump sum payout, is what I call it, of $10 million. I believe, quote me, correct me if I'm wrong, but everyone in Wayne County, the municipalities got under $10 million. So, what they're doing is they're just electing the revenue loss, and they're going to use that for regular government services. I believe Goldsboro was 8 million?
That's them.
I think that's right. So, basically, they're allocating that for just government services, salaries, you know, operations, whatever. So, to answer your question, yes, I think that they could use some of that revenue loss money and use it as a grant. I would just be concerned that we allocate that correctly, that we look at that project and we identify, okay, how much of our, because we've already, we've already took that 10 million, so how much of our 13.9 is going to be designated to that project? What portion of that project is the 13.9 going to be used for? And then what portion is that city or town's revenue loss portion? What's that going to pay for? And I think as long as you report that and track that appropriately, yeah, I think that would be permissible.
We've got to be careful on the revenue loss, and I'll say that with everybody, for that matter, because if you start allocating money for X, and it's a revolving expenditure, and then all of a sudden, the money runs out, then you're stuck with.
It's a one. And I think the positive way we have looked at this, and I think the board has as well, is that is more fund balance issues, that is not part of our operating budget. And you're exactly right. Those people who count that as a revenue, that's a one-time, well, you've got five years to spend it, but it's really a one-time shot of revenue.
Yeah. But year six, it's going to bite you.
Year six, it's going to bite you. So.
But the other thing about the revenue loss, I know even if you use that, for example, for a capital project, what we recently learned as well is, okay, so you use it for that capital project as part of your pay-go, so you're paying cash for part of the project, and then you're going to borrow. What happens if you put that building up as collateral? Well, technically, that means you use your revenue loss money as debt service, and that's not a permissible use. So, you've got to be really careful. You can say, oh, let me just build this building, but if you're putting up that building as collateral, the feds might come back and say, whoa, 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 you're actually using that as quasi-debt service, so that's not permissible, so then they clawback those funds.
And that'll bite you before the sixth year.
There's a lot of nuances to it, obviously.
Okay. Interesting discussion. I need a motion to approve the policies.
So, move.
All right. We've got a motion on the floor to approve the two policies, the subaward policy and the conflict of interest policy. Any discussion on the motion? You're a nun. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay. Number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next is motion to approve ARP funds request for option one, as shown in the Wayne Executive Jet Port improvements request. And again, in your agenda packets, we have some issues with respect to drainage at the end of the runway, and we have two options to look at. One is basically an open ditch. The second one is looking at piping. The recommendation is to look at the open ditch at $919,000, and that is presented to you for your approval. And this, we have appropriate budget amendment. And again, this has been presented to us by the Airport Advisory Commission as well.
Okay. I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approved the open ditch with the appropriate.
The open ditch option.
With the appropriate budget amendment.
All right. I've got a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? You're a nun. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand.
Okay. And next, we would like to go into the jet port as well. Motion to approve work authorization, number two. Funding application needed for state ARP funds for the Wayne Executive Jet Port and appropriate budget amendment. And this is basically, we're asking for an application to be approved and work authorizing our engineering firm to submit that on our behalf.
Well, first of all, to draft up, do the work too.
Right. Right. Do the work. Yes, sir.
Okay. And appropriate budget amendment.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Time tight.
I need a motion to approve the work authorization, number two. Okay. We've got a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? With the appropriate budget amendment.
With the appropriate. And as part.
Hold on just one second. Let me get a vote on this. Motion on the floor. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay? Now you move.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Next is motion to adopt resolution for state funding application for Wayne Executive Jet Port. And this is to ask for a resolution for approval, ask the state for funding at the jet port.
Okay. Need a motion?
So, move.
We've got a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Let me make this point, and that is, what we're doing here is actually, first of all, having the engineers draft up the application to apply to the state to use their ARP funds in order for the upgrade for the pumping station, sewage pumping station at the jet port. And so, that's what this is all about. Okay. Any more discussion? You're a nun. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Now, we're moving to number five.
Now, thank you. One of the things, number five, is motion to approve Wayne County 911 Department recommended salary adjustments. Number one, I want to thank the board. If you remember back at our budget retreat, our goal-setting retreat on January 28th, one of the things that we listed was a number five, look at pay grades for departments not previously addressed. We have had some issues with respect to making sure we're fully staffed at 911. We went back, and I appreciate the work that Ginger and her staff did, looking at the ranges, and our ranges needed to be adjusted and adjusted fairly to make it a, to be competitive with our neighbors. So, what we would like to recommend is on pages 124, 125, use our lapsed salaries to fund the increases for the ranges for people in 911.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approved the Wayne County 911 Department recommended salary adjustments.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion?
I have one question, Mr. Chairman. All these ranges, I hope we're looking at other departments. Are we doing a study on their salaries as well?
We are. Again, we're fixing to do animal control, but a lot are coming up in the budget as well. But we had an immediate need now, and we felt like we could fund it right now with existing dollars in this existing budget year. That's the reason why we wanted to go ahead and get animal control and 911 done now.
Well, with the department heads, what can they look for in working on their budgets and everything? You know, we're looking at these percentages, when they're putting their budget together, what criteria are they going off of?
We're working with them individually, and we're doing individual department salary studies as well for them. So, we're not, it's not really a certain percentage that we're looking at. It's based upon the ranges that we're getting and being competitive in their job, especially with our surrounding counties.
Any more discussion on the motion? Here or none? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
And again, number six, motion to approve the Wayne County Animal Services Department, uh, recommended salary adjustments. Uh, again, uh, we're about 20% below to be at the mid-range, and, uh, we are short on staffing, and, and we believe right now part of the, the shortages is due to, uh, the pay that we are giving, uh, animal controls. So, uh, again, appreciate the work Ginger and her staff did, but looking at our lapped salary, uh, to make the adjustments.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion to approve the Wayne County Animal Services Department recommended salary adjustments.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Here or none? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Thank you. And, and again, to go back to, uh, Commissioner Acoff's concerns, we are looking at multiple departments, uh, as part of the budget process, uh, for July 1.
I hope so, because, you know, this is, this is something that can be detrimental to other departments, you know, because they feel like they're just as important. And, and we have departments that has, uh, certain credentials that are very valuable, and I don't want them to be overlooked as well.
We, we fully agree. Um, this was just immediate needs that we saw, and, and we felt like we could do something now, uh, within the current budget.
And if I could get a little bit more clarification, one is, um, we started this process, I think, with the Sheriff's Department.
Uh, EMS.
EMS.
Right.
So w- we are taking them department by department. Um, we just can't do, uh, uh, countywide all at one time.
Well.
We actually were hiring, uh, outside consultants on this. Uh, that person has retired, so that person is no longer available. So we have developed a program within our HR department to actually do this study. It, it's really been an eye-opening experience, because I don't know how we got to the point that we were at absolutely in every category, the lowest-paying county in our entire region.
It started a long time ago.
I mean, it's just amazing how we were at that point. Now we have got to go and make these adjustments, which are, are very significant adjustments, to be mid-range, not at the top, not at the bottom, but in mid-range. Um, further clarification, we have decided to actually implement a policy with HR. Going forward, on a three-year rotating basis, every department will have that study done, and we won't be back into the situation of having this huge catch-up. Uh, so i- it, it's a real issue, and you are absolutely correct. Every depo-, every employee is just as valuable as the next one. Um, we are working through that. I think currently, we are working at DSS. Is that correct? What, what other?
Uh, DSS help department.
Or the two that are now on the table that they're working on.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So we, we are gradually getting through there, so we're just asking all of our employees to be patient. We recognize the problem finally. Uh, and let me just say on a side note here, I had a good friend of mine that worked in one of these departments, and for three years he's told me how little he had been paid, and every time I said, well, everybody's underpaid and overworked. But, but at any rate, he was true. He was, he was accurate. I just kind of shifted to one side. Uh, he is now retiring as these races are now happening, so what can I say? Um, but we are addressing it, I think, uh, countywide, uh, as judiciously and responsibly as possible.
Right, and, and, and again, the thought process with these two were, these were kind of immediate needs, uh, and also we did not have to move money from fund balance. They, they were already funds that were budgeted right there.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, we've got to put part of the blame on this board, not this board, but I'm, I'm going on, me and you's going on this board close to 10 years now. We've had some big projects in the county, huge projects. It took a lot of money, and we've got to take part of the blame for getting in this situation. Uh, we've, money won't go, but so far, but, uh, the projects that we've approved in the last 10 years were very important. They've been an asset to Wayne County. They're bringing, uh, revenue into Wayne County. Uh, but I honestly feel like that we've, part of, part of the blame falls on us, because we, uh, like I say, a dollar won't go, but so far. But, uh, we are addressing it now. We're going to correct it on all the departments. Uh, but like the chairman said, please bear with us, because, uh, we've, uh, we've kicked this can down the road long enough.
I'd just like to say I compliment Commissioner Acoff on making that, those comments, because that's where the problem started. If you don't raise taxes, which we hadn't done in quite some time. If we try to maintain a tight budget, the first thing that's going to go is raises for personnel. And we've got to re- recognize that the personnel are our assets. You know, they're what makes the counties, they're the ones that make the county grow.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I will, uh, it, it, uh, it started well before 10 years ago. This has been going on, I've been kind of involved in politics on the backside, and the mentality of we were a training center. And so that's, so it's not, all the blame's not on the, the past 10 years. I mean, it's gone for years, so I'll just leave it at that.
We've seen the error of our ways, and we're trying to correct it as rapidly as possible.
We're just trying to remind you.
We'll see it, Mr. Chairman, we'll see it.
All right, with that in mind, uh, County Managers report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, one thing, uh, in, in talking with the chair, and I, I think the original request came from, um, Commissioner Hardison, was, uh, at our January 28th meeting, we did goals and objectives. And, um, you know, it's kind of like, well, so where we're at, you know, it's been three months, where we're at, and, um.
I think I said that after 30 days.
Yeah, he did, the chairman did, the chairman said, Craig, where you at? And you, you know, it's been two weeks, we've not completed it yet, so. But what we did, and, and I, I want to say first, I'm very proud of the staff, is that we really have addressed most everything on this list, not completed, but we're addressing things on this list. And, and, um, I'm just, and this has been within less than three months. So, um, you know, priorities were Northern Library, uh, focus on the new Northern Library, we're working with our library staff, we're looking at options for renovations. So, uh, we're looking at that. Sewer, develop a long-term, uh, solution to county sewer issues, including Town of Mount Olive, possibly bring sanitary districts in as partners, uh, and look at a, um, a water and sewer system, uh, throughout the county. Uh, again, we're working with Withers and Ravenel, uh, but also CDM Smith on the violi-, or the vi- viability reserve grant with the State Department of Enviro-, uh, Environmental Quality. Expand broadband. Uh, as the board's aware, we have submitted three grants to the great grant to expand broadband here in Wayne County. Um, again, hire a full-time grant writer, which has been mentioned a couple of times, and the sheriff would like to kind of throw his, uh, hat and, and support for that. Uh, we have the position advertised. Uh, our applicants are not as strong as we would like it at this point, uh, but we're still having the position open, because we wanted to go ahead and fill that, because we do see the necessity, uh, and, and the possibilities that that could be in the county. Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, just compliment this board for considering a grant writer. There's a lot of money left on the table every year. Uh, Madam Commissioner has sent me numerous emails about budgeting, uh, and how some grants could be possibly looked into, but we have a skill set that we need to have a grant writer that we don't have in our office, and I compliment this board. Uh, I know that the last grant we got, I just about drove finance crazy trying to help me get that grant written. But, uh, again, thank you for considering it for this county.
Great. Uh, Mr. County Manager, we might want to broaden our thinking here. Uh, possi- if we can't find the individual grant writer, we might have to, uh, look at either through the Doyle County Association of County Commissioners, the municipalities, uh, some of our colleges and universities, but somehow or another, we got to expand the net.
I'm totally agree.
So basically what he's saying, we need to find, we need to steal somebody from somebody else.
No, that's good.
I'm good with that, I'm, I'm good with that. Um, uh, so that.
That's good, that's good.
That is a good thing, yes, sir.
That is good.
They've already trained them.
Yes, all right. Um, so that's number four. Number five, looking at pay grades for departments not have previously addressed. And again, we just addressed with animal control and 911. And again, this is part of the budget process that we're continually working on the last couple of weeks now. Um, quarterly meetings with municipalities. Uh, again, we've completed that. Uh, uh, first one was March 1st, and we do have a second meeting scheduled for June 7th. Um, number seven, authorize a study to improve every department's operation, to improve efficiency and minimize positions while improving delivery of services and better use of technology. Uh, one of the things that we're working on, Chip actually found this with NC State, uh, through the Industry Expansion Solutions Division. Uh, they do have, uh, a program where they will come in and, and teach county, uh, department heads and managers lean operations and how to use technology. Uh, they have a governmental side as well, so, uh, uh, we've identified them. We've not pursued it yet, but we have it identified, and we've had some initial conversations with.
If I had to expand on that one.
Yeah.
Uh, for decades, we have county departments that are operating using the same methods, uh, or methodology, uh, in their daily operations. There, there has not been an effort for streamlining or improving efficiencies in our operations. Uh, and so I'm glad to see that we've identified an organization that actually could come in and work with our individual departments of finding ways to accomplish more with less effort, uh, improve efficiencies. And so I would encourage our board to hopefully encourage our staff to reach out to them and get more information on this.
Right, we need to do that, to implement that in our, um, health of DSS building.
Absolutely.
So we need to be a, they need to be on the forefront of our discussions.
Yeah, also, Mr. Chairman, on what you just mentioned here, which is a great idea. I have found, you know, by working with departments and previous, uh, physicians and stuff, a lot of times if you approach the people who are doing the jobs and put them together in one room and just toss out ideas, you would find that these people have great ideas. One of the, uh, when I was working at Cooper Standard, uh, there was a project that we went out and seek professional help, but the very person that solved the problem and saved the company over a million dollars was one of the persons doing the job. A lot of times, the people that are doing the jobs are the ones that has the knowledge of how to make the improvements, if you may put them together and, and get their thought process going. And that's just a suggestion to department heads. They've got a lot of good ideas.
Okay, uh, then number eight, uh, discuss, discussion and next steps for exploring merging the DSS and Health Department into a consolidated Human Services Department. Uh, we've had initial discussions, but we've not, you know, with everything else going on, we've not really dealt, dealt first into that yet. Um, number nine, create a working group with the Board of Education after completion of Fremont, um, but that's not worded correctly. Uh, basically, it's a working group very similar to what we have with the new Fremont Elementary School between the Board of Commissioners and, uh, the Board of Education. Uh, they're in the process, I think, bid opening for the school is May 2nd, if I'm not mistaken. And then there'll be a lot more work for that committee to do, to review plans and review, uh, ideas. Uh, but we've also talked about having a working group, because we received $20 million for Rosewood Middle, and, and how we could work together, because the direct, came directly to the county, not to the school system.
We're on the process of the lottery funds. Has that been rectified?
We, we're, we're waiting.
We're waiting for approval. We have not.
Do we need to wait on the?
We just can't start construction. We can open the bids, we just cannot start construction until they award that additional 15 million.
Right.
Do they have a date, Mr. Chairman?
We're, it's any day.
We, yeah, we were, I think we checked last week, and they said this week, I think, that they're looking at.
I just want to make sure that's not part of the construction process.
Right.
Right, right.
You know what I mean?
Yes.
Two or three days costs you 15 million.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just keep in mind, we're from the state, we're here to help you.
Uh, but, but again, that, that committee has worked out well so far, and we really wanted to recreate that when, uh, Rosewood.
If you'll reach out to the schools and see where they're at on Rosewood.
I, I have, I have, and David said nowhere yet, so he'll keep us in updated on that.
Let us know when we need to get that committee.
Uh, number 10, storage area for Facilities Department, uh, for safe storage, and we've done that with, recently with the purchase of the Gambelli property. Uh, there's 19,000 square feet of really open space that were, uh, more than adequate for what we need for storage, uh, and other op- options for offices as well. Uh, number 11 was the summer youth employment. Uh, we are working on that now. Um, I, I think Ginger's having, uh, conversations tomorrow, and, and hopefully with the new coordinator, and we're going to get that off the ground, and, and, and you'll see a lot more work being done on that.
And the new coordinator has been hired.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you for your work, Ginger, appreciate it so much.
She's done a yeoman's job, and, and, and between that and looking at, uh, paying class and, and everything else, she's just, done a great job. Uh, one thing we have not completed and, and really not touched yet is the digital library for District 2. Uh, that is still on the list. And then 13 was storm water management plan for di- design construction of water management structure to alleviate potential flooding, and we've not really gone too far on that at this point. Uh, but again, I'm very proud, you know, to say in the last three months, that, that we've really kick-started most everything on this list. So, and again, that goes back to just having a really good staff.
Well, and I agree. Uh, I think that you all have done a yeoman's work of working right into the goals that we established at the end of January. So, um, keep up the good work, let's finish out the list.
Um, just a couple of things I did want to mention. Uh, did not know if you were aware of this, um, Ashley Smith, who is, uh, over Soul and Water, uh, recently put a resignation in, so we wish Ashley well. So we'll be working on Soul and Water Board about getting that position filled, but we wish Ashley well. Uh, and want to let you know, if you're missing Chip and Barry today, they just didn't decide to play hooky. Uh, they're in Jacksonville. Uh, we are getting part of the Prosperity Zone Grant from the Golden Leaf Foundation. Uh, the county will get about 1.2 million dollars directly from Golden Leaf, and Barry and Chip are down there now at the kickoff meeting, uh, trying to get the process so that we can take that back and implement that here in the county. And, and that'll be a countywide grant, you know, that municipalities and also, you know, nonprofits can ask for as well, but, but the funds run through the county.
Hmm, okay.
Uh, I think it's 1.2.
Okay.
And that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
That's all you got?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Williams?
Um, we had a very good meeting today. Um, um, we, we, we were informed, you know, pertaining to our youth here in this county, and I just, you know, I just, we just need a call of action for, for all our volunteers, and we also have our, um, elected official in the House, Ms. Brandy Matthews, Councilwoman Matthews. Um, congratulations on your award you, you received today. You do work hard, wear many hats, but I'm, I'm hoping that we can get the community to start to volunteer more in regard to the youth here. They are our future. We say it all the time, you know, and, um, they won't have a future if we don't instill some things in them, so, um, let's, let's do something to help them, and, um, that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. A, Barbara Acoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I would like to congratulate the, uh, former police chief, uh, Craig Owens in Pipeful. He, uh, is retired. He worked at Pipeful for many years and done a great job, and I went to his, uh, dinner that they had for him there, and he had a big crowd and, and told a lot of good stories on law enforcement, some of the things. told a lot of good stories on law enforcement, some of the things that they done. But it was very entertaining and very good. Also, I'm on the Wise Women for the Chamber, I've been asked to be on that. Hopefully I'll be a little wiser when I get through with this program, but I'm looking forward to that. And, and also Lineman Workers Appreciation Week. I want to send my gratitude to the linemen, you know, especially when the ice storms come and we appreciate them guys getting our utilities back on. I've had some linemen work for me and they do a good job and scary job, far as I'm concerned, getting up in that bucket and dealing with electricity, but it is Lineman Workers Appreciation. And also I would like to thank Ms. Matthews for coming today and thank you for your volunteer work and everything. We appreciate everything that our volunteers do because like Mr. Pittman said, we need more people to volunteering and help with our youth because we do have a big problem. And he stated also that concern me in the last four years, these numbers have elevated.
Oh, yeah.
What has happened in the last four years to cause this to elevate? I mean, that, that's a question that really needs to be asked. And I want to thank Commissioner Williams for the youth program, maybe this would be a good kickstart in getting some of the youth involved.
Yes, yes.
Because we really need to focus on that and thank you for that, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you all.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Hartz?
I'd like to welcome Ms. Moore also for being here. She's a behind the scenes person that kind of inspires a certain gentleman up here. And also Ms. Catherine Matthews. I'd like to thank everyone who sent their prayers. Most of you know I've had a little health upset recently and I'd like to thank everyone for their, for their prayers. But one thing that Mr. Pittman stated was the mental health problems with our youth. However, we in Wayne County have a mental health problem, not only with the youth, but with our homeless population and also adults in general. And it's not been addressed, it's not been addressed by the county, it's not been addressed by our health, our health organizations here. And to be honest with you, I don't know what to do about it, but it is a growing, growing concern here. And part of the violence, I think, is fueled by mental health issues. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Earl?
To address something Commissioner Acock just said, Dustin made comment that it was, they had more uptick on some of this during COVID hit. So a lot of that was, is being where children are not being in school because they have actually in the last little bit, been recruiting younger people to be part of their gang issue. And I know that's not the only issue he talked about, but that's the thing that kind of hit me more than anything because I've got children in school and they have issues on a continual basis. The next thing is I encourage everyone, we as elected officials are, but everyone contact your congressmen and senators in DC. There is a legislation in Congress that is called the Pete's Act that is limiting the transportation of types of agricultural animals or fish or whatever it might be across state lines. So this is going to, and it's actually supposed to be a federal offense if you get caught, which is, you know, going to drive cost up. It's supposed to be something that is to address the China or overseas trade, but the way it's written is actually going to affect people in the United States, which, you know, already our cost of food is, is, has grown exponentially in the last little bit and it's going to get even worse if this doesn't, if this passes. So please, please educate yourself on that and it's on Facebook or whatever, social media and contact your congressman.
Okay. Mr. Acock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the pleasure of going out last Tuesday to the We Dig It program out at Odom Farms where all of the secret graders in the school system go out and really find out where their food comes from. I want to commend the Odom family for putting this on and all of the people behind the scenes that are responsible for cause, they can't just put it on by themselves. The school system does a great job on working with them on that program and a lot of other nonprofits and other groups that help them with it. And it's, it's great to see the kids because there was a smiling face on all of them because they got, they just got the chance to see and do things that, that normally don't get a chance to do and may never get a chance to do it again. Also, I'd like to mention the weekend of May 6th and 7th, I did the Wayne Regional Fire Ground, Eastern Carolina Vintage Farm Club and the Grant, Grantham and Brogdon Grange has combined, Grantham and Brogdon Grange is celebrating their 85th anniversary, they've combined with the annual event that the Eastern Carolina Vintage Farm Club has to combine it this year. And I think it's going to be a, a big event, a lot of display of farm equipment, old farm equipment. The Grange has got a great program going on and this is, both of these groups are nonprofits. The admission is free, we just hope to have good weather and hope to have a good turnout. Also tonight, Wayne County Fire Fighters Association monthly meeting is being held at Dudley Fire Department. Thank you, Kendall. There'll be a meal at 7:00 soon.
Yes, sir.
And, and then the meeting at 7:30. Also, the two gentlemen sitting on the back row, just smiling from ear to ear, y'all can go back to your departments now and share the good news with them. And thank y'all for being here today. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'm sure they were attending, you know.
Oh, yeah, I've already had phone calls, I just didn't ask them.
Councilwoman Matthews, I watch with great interest your council meetings and your passion is just, just comes through the screen, I'm telling you, keep up that passion. Thank you for being here today. The news today was mighty grim in regards to what Dustin had shared with us. We've got to find a program and we've got to implement it, we got to find the money somewhere to redirect these kids. I mean, we've got to do it. For years Dustin has come here and made his presentation and it was kind of like the salary issues. It kind of goes on, you hear it and then you move on. This is so critical that we, I think this board is committed to finding some solutions. So let's, let's put that on your little chart there, you're going to have to add that to your list because we've got to take care of.
Yes.
Budget time is here. And it's amazing what you learn just by sitting in the room and listening to department heads come in and make their presentation. First, they have to get over the shock that we're sitting there. I don't know why that kind of intimidates them, but it, anyway, they get over it very quickly. But you hear more about the day-to-day operation and their actual needs by sitting in the room and listening to their presentation and I really have enjoyed it and hopefully we'll find some solution to some of your issues. We hope so at any rate. Also, it was really interesting to see that the federal government has come to help Wayne County. They've given us a pot of money and then, but with it came the strings from, I don't know where. I don't know who sits there and creates all of the red tape in regards to, oh, well, we're going to give you the money, but you got to jump through all of these loops in order to use it. And if you by chance make a mistake, we're going to come back and make you find some way to pay us back. So I think we've spent now two years just working through the regulations, maybe a year, I don't know, flies for old men. But hopefully we can, now that we've got our policies in place, hopefully the final rule will come out and then we can find some disposition. We, I commend this board for not jumping quickly to find and commit to spending dollars until we actually had all of the strings before us. So Andrew, I know it's been a, a real task and we appreciate it. We appreciate so much that you are making sure that we're not going to find ourselves in a situation that we stepped outside the lines. Any other comments? We are recessing our meeting because we're going to have lunch today at the Maxwell Center with the Farm Bureau. Okay, so we are now in recess.